And welcome to today's work session for April 12th. Thank you all for joining us. We want to now call tonight's meeting to order. The first item on the agenda, I want to give the council a chance to take a look because I know we've been expert, I don't know what that was. Okay, so the first item is the approval of the agenda. Does everyone have the latest copy? Approval of the agenda? So again, just wanted to give everyone a chance to take a look and ask for a motion to approve the agenda. While we're doing that, it might be easier if Mr. Tenelli, are you able to bring it up on the screen?
Can you see it?
Yes.
So my screen shifted a little bit, but for the council members, are you all able to see? The agenda?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor James, I have my hand raised.
Okay, so once the motion goes to discussion, we can take the edits if you have any council member out. Were there edits you were going to propose to the agenda?
You know it because I sent them to you.
I'm so moved.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lundie, is there a second? Councilmember, did you want to make the second so we could get the edits in? I'm sorry, I'm trying to see you between the screens and it's hard, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay, well now go to discussion.
So I am not in favor of this agenda. It is not the pleasure of the council as there were there were individual emails that were sent to the town administrator, the acting town administrator with the requested agenda items. So I would like to I do not, I'm not in favor of this draft agenda.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Rowell. As I said, I know there was a lot of back and forth with emails today, so let's go through and make the adjustments. So one thing I noticed on here that I don't see is the, there was a request about excused absences. Initially, I think it was under approval of minutes, but that's not a minutes item. So if we want to put that under old business since it relates to the prior meeting.
Actually like for it to be not, for it to be added into the minute. So that's another, that's another thing. So if you look at the email that was shared today, the missing items are excuse absences and approval of the minutes. Because in the minutes, it doesn't reflect that the absences were approved. I know there were medical procedures, there were family emergencies in talking to my council colleagues. And so that is why it's under the approval of minutes. The second item of business is for old business. We are requesting a grant status update for the emergency grants and for the nonprofit grants. There are two additional items to include the
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm trying to write it down, you're going too fast.
Oh, it's in your email. It's in your email. Spring prayer week, council women, that'll be presented by myself. Senior gathering, that's missing, and I believe that's Councilmember Blunt. And then mental health awareness month, that is missing, and I will be presenting on that. For spring prayer week, senior gathering and mental health awareness, we're requesting three minutes each for those.
So Councilmember Rowell, I, I'm not sure what happened, but what you're reading off is the version that I have. So let me see if I can share my screen.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you for your patience because this is, it happens when there's several emails going back and forth. So give me a second. So let's Mr. Gray, I have the agenda. Are you able to give me permission to share my screen?
Yes, hold on.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't see any changes on my end, but oh, okay, here we go. Give me a second. Okay, are you all able to see this with the first item under approval of minutes, excused absences? Are you able to see that?
Yes.
So give me a second, it's going to be a little bit of a delay, I'm scrolling down. Are you able to see old business items? Okay.
Yes.
I'm scrolling down again, bear with me, and you should see spring prayer week. Is that correct?
Yes.
Senior gathering, mental health awareness, constant yield, and then these are the items that were on before.
That's correct.
So is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's work session? Or I'm sorry, the motion's on the table, is there any further discussion?
Mayor James, is this, is this the one that we're voting on or we're voting on the other one?
We're voting on the work session agenda that I'm displaying at this moment, which includes the edits. I had provided as well as other members of the council. This is the agenda that I just scrolled through so that everyone on the call was able to view all of the items. Now call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I.
I.
I, any nays, the I's have it, thank you so much. And I do want to note, Councilmember Mendoza did indicate he had a conflict for tonight, so he will not be attending the work session, nor will he be at the council meeting. So with that, getting into the first item. So we didn't formally do minutes for the last meeting, we didn't have a quorum, therefore it was just an information session. So that's the reason why there's really no formal minutes for that meeting. I did want to follow up on a point just raised by Councilmember Rowell. As I did reach out to just make sure that we're following proper procedures with the request to provide excused absences. So we do normally have the opportunity, if a council member is not with us, to say we want to vote to excuse Councilmember X from tonight's meeting due to this reason. In this situation, I understand, and I'm going to read verbatim from our attorney. An absence can be retroactively excused, but the involved council members cannot vote to do so when the vote concerns them individually. It is a conflict. So if it were that those who were not present, were not voting on the matter, we could very easily just vote to excuse those absences. But in this situation, in order to have a quorum to pass the vote, the three individuals who weren't available due to personal conflicts are those who were impacted. Therefore, according to our attorney's guidance, we're not able to vote to excuse those absences. So I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that and ask if there were any questions.
Mayor James, I do have a question as it relates to that.
Yes.
Yes, I just would like for it to be added into the minutes prior to the approval of that. And to my recollection, being able to use Robert's Rules of Order, that voting person cannot, cannot, like I cannot vote on my own absence, but you and the other council members can vote on mine and I can do for theirs. So I do agree with our town attorney and her Robert's Rules of Order interpretation. So that is still the reason why I would like to request that it is voted on so that it can be included in the actual record.
Councilmember Rowell, thank you for that perspective, I appreciate it. And so with that in mind, it's going to take a second, and we're already 15 minutes into the agenda. So if we could do this quickly, is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Rowell from the March 8th meeting?
I'm moved.
Moved by Councilmember Rowell, seconded, I'm sorry, by Councilmember Lundie, seconded by Councilmember Blunt. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of I.
I.
Any nays, the I's have it. Is there a motion on the table to excuse Councilmember Blunt from the March 8th meeting?
I'm moved.
Moved by Councilmember Rowell, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lundie, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I.
I.
Any nays, the I's have it. Motion on the table for approving the excused absence of Councilmember Blunt.
I still move.
Moved by Councilmember Rowell, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lundie, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I.
I.
Any nays, the I's have it, thank you so much. And with that, we can definitely edit the minutes. Well, there won't even be formal minutes for that, so that's a moot point, it's just on the record. Moving forward, is there a motion on the table to approve the February 8th work session minutes?
I still move.
Moved by Councilmember Rowell, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lundie, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I.
I.
Any nays, the I's have it. Moving to the January 11th work session minutes, is there a motion to approve?
I still move.
Moved by Councilmember Rowell, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lundie, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I. I, any nays, the I's have it, thank you so much. And that completes the approval of the minutes. Now we'll get into old business, which is the grant status update. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Tenelli or Chief Collington, I'm not sure how you all want to tag team that one.
I can go. The emergency grant, we posted that and we've had some applications. There was $20,000 allocated to it and we dispersed $4,000 already. We have a couple other applications that just came in that are pending and they look like they will be going this week as well. In the amounts of $900 and additional $1,000. I did reach out to some people that I had contact info for that suffered losses due to the flooding back on September 10th. And a few of them did get back to me, so I encourage anyone who knows of anybody that has experienced any damage. I mean, this, this isn't only for the flooding event, but this is for, that's what precipitated this. So that's what we know right now. So those are ones that we want to reach out to. But of course, there's others in there that can apply as well if you look through the grant application. So council members or staff or residents, business owners, anybody that, you know, knows of folks' homes that were damaged during the flood, please contact them and we'll send them out a grant application. We have this through the end of June 30th unless it's going to be updated again. It's going to be ongoing thing, we haven't discussed yet, I don't think. But right now, you know, we have until the end of this fiscal year, so encourage anybody to go ahead and apply.
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli, and it's good to hear some folks have already received reimbursements. I know I was happy to get the thank you note from Ms. Anderson, so appreciate you moving these along. Any questions from the council? And again, y'all bear with me because I'm sharing my screen, so it's a little hard.
Question, just for the sake of clarification, I know Mr. Tenelli, I spoke with you on Friday. Thank you so much for taking my call and calling me back. Just so that the public can hear and understand, this is true for any disaster or emergency that had affected them as it relates to a catastrophic event or an emergency. Okay, so this also includes the Newton, where we had to hurry up and displace families out of the Newton Street. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure because there were, when I was calling over the weekend to follow up, there was some, it was, there was some questions. So I just wanted to just clear that up, so thank you so much.
Yes, for sudden catastrophic events, sudden severe and/or catastrophic event, which emergency repair is one that is required.
Thank you so much.
So it's broad enough that it will cover that, yes.
Thank you so much.
And I do recall the discussion from the council was for that reason, because last year was the flash flood, but we can't forecast what it could be in 2021, so it just addresses emergencies more broadly. And coming back to you, Mr. Tenelli, on an update on nonprofit grants.
This was, I just saw this. These were the $6,000 allocated for organizations to apply for town funding. We normally do these at the beginning of the summer, and I think with the transition, I'd go through the previous town clerk's office and find where we did have two applications for this. We're not brought to the mayor and council. But I think to do, it was just made to do this right, I think, I think we should advertise it again for another couple weeks maybe to put it back out there, to bring it back to you all for the May meeting. Just to give folks, you know, because, you know, we have some staffing issues, this wasn't brought to the mayor and council. We asked these to be sent back, I think, I don't want to say by July or August. But, you know, months have passed. To do this right, I think we should just go ahead and put that out there again, but that's up to the mayor and council, that's just my recommendation though.
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli, and you're right, I do recall, normally this is right at the beginning of the fiscal cycle, but that was a time of transition. I think it is good though, just to put it back out there, at least for the two who've submitted, they're good. But to give fair opportunity to our constituents. And then also because if you remember, that was still an uncertain time for a lot of organizations. And so even though we put it out, they may have been overwhelmed, you know, due to program shutdowns at the time and different things in light of COVID. So I think they would also appreciate it if we would just give them the time to re-announce it, give a few weeks for them to get their documents together and submit, but would love to hear from the council.
And hopefully we have some more applicants too.
Right, right. Councilmember Rowell?
Yes, Mayor James, I do support everything that you just said. And if all of my colleagues, if we could all come together, it's been a very rough year and I know the nonprofits have been hit the hardest. Are you?
Thank you, Councilmember Rowell. And then also I remember Councilmember Blunt made this statement previously that sometimes we get the same groups. So perhaps if we do another call for applications, we can all push it out to our networks that we know are doing good work in the community, just to encourage some new organizations. But Councilmember Blunt, over to you.
Yeah, Vito, if you need some assistance with that, I'm more than welcome. I know you said I can't, if I work with or something to that effect, but if you can call me maybe tomorrow and you can let me know, I can assist you with that.
Appreciate that. And we normally have a grant review committee, myself, town administrator and town clerk. You know, we can hash these out internally, you know, between, you know, acting administrator, chief, myself, and, you know, we go ahead and hash these out and bring these to you all. And Councilmember Blunt, I will be calling you about this too, so.
Thank you, because I really
Yeah, definitely, definitely. And please reach, you know, as everyone said, please, please reach out to everybody. As Councilmember Rowell said, I mean, you know, nonprofits been hurt, you know, I mean, they've been hit because they rely on rely on donations and there's just not that money flowing into the pipeline right now.
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli. And so next we'll move right into new business, because I don't know if you, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lundie, let me come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Mr. Tenelli, I just wanted to know, who are the two applicants for the application that we can't discuss it yet?
Wait and hear them all at the same time out of fairness, yes, yeah. But I'm sorry
I really do, but
Just so we're being objective and, you know, since we have to deliberate on it, want to be careful. At this time, we'll jump into new business. You can tell, one, the streets have been high on my mind from community input. And then I can't wait to get to the PEPCO update, so I'm trying to move us along because we have Mr. Tony Ruffin on the line with us. But at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Purnell Hall to talk us through the road updates. And Mr. Hall, I was getting feedback, so I think I muted you. So I'm going to try to unmute you, hold on a second here. I just sent you a request to unmute, did it work?
Yes, ma'am, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, go right ahead.
Okay, good afternoon, mayor, council and staff. And as Mayor James said, we, WSSC has, did probably about 65 to 70% of our new roadways in town. And what we had was, we had some roadways in between, new roadways that didn't get paved or wasn't in WSSC's scope of work. And what we're bringing to you now today is three proposals from three different companies for the scope of work, which will be milling and overlaying in the 5400 block of Uppster Street and also in the 54 block of 54th Street, I'm sorry. And here we got, we have three vendors, Pronto Paving, Empty Langley, Metro Paving. And all of them came at a pretty good prices, but Pronto Paving came at a price of $3,105, 30, I'm, I'm scusing, sorry, $31,597. Empty Langley came at $31,972. And also Metro Paving came at $4359. And I wanted to bring to the mayor and council for approval to see if we can get this roadwork done that's in between the roads that didn't get paved during the WSSC roadwork.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. And before opening it up to the council, I did want to ask, did you have a recommendation on which vendor that you think the council should move in favor of? Or did one stand out more than the other based on the proposals?
Sure, all of them does a very great job. And as you say, Metro Paving is a very big paving company that do a great big work of Merlin roadways with state highway and everything. And also I'm quite sure everybody maybe seen Empty Langley with the red trucks all through Prince George's County. So they, they do a great bit of work, but also Pronto Paving, they did a work in Spring Road and they also did a patch work, which was our first phase on 58th Avenue. So I would, I mean, I'm not in favor of, you know, I can't, you know, say just one or another, you know, all of them do a great job. But the time is consuming and what we want done right now, I probably would go with the first one, which would be Pronto Paving. Because Empty Langley and Metro Paving, as I said, they're big companies and to bring them back in here as the summer starts may take us a couple of months.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall, that is super helpful. And then I do like the fact that they're a minority owned business that, and also certified small business, so that's definitely appealing. Just two questions I had on this proposal. The first was, is there a warranty for the work that's being done? And then the second one, in the proposal, it said TCP is not included. So wanted to know what TCP is and roughly how much that would cost us, that's not the traffic control, is it?
No, ma'am, actually TCP is just what it says, you know, traffic control plan, okay? That's when you're on a big road and you have a plan of your traffic control. But in a small area that they have, they have no more than like 800, maybe 820 feet of roadway that they're doing. So a traffic control plan is not considered.
Okay, that is helpful. Any questions from the council or other staff? None, okay. So does it, just doing a consensus, do you all have a feeling one way or the other in terms of the company you would like to move in favor of when we get to the council meeting?
I'm sorry, Mayor James, my hand was raised and I kind of forgot for like five seconds that you couldn't see. So my apologies for not reminding you, may I speak?
Absolutely, and again, I apologize because first you were here, now you're over here, now you're back in the middle.
So I, I, I just, you know, I trust, you know, our, our, our staff, they have lots of relationships. But unfortunately, it wasn't presented to us in a written format, or did I not see it in the packet? Was that an error I made? And then I also have a second question to Mr. Hall. I remember when we were talking about the WSSC as they were, they had their big trucks coming in. Where I live on 55th and there was a couple neighbors down, they have a huge patch of, like, ass, like, it's like a dent in, in 55th because of, I think because of the trucks that were coming up and down to, for that Tilden, Tilden Road work. And I remember you saying that you had talked to them and you had asked them about that and you all did a temporary patch just on behalf of us. Well, it's now crumbly and like a little bit nasty again. And so I was just wondering with that WSSC update, were they going to do, I know they did some of 55th, are they going to finish it like moving down? And then if not, should we put that in these proposals for highway user funds? So it was like a triple question, my apologies.
Sure, sure, that's no problem, no problem at all.
And Mr. Hall, real quick, Mr. Hall, real quick, just on the proposals, I believe the information went out on Friday. Councilmember, I'm trying to find the email from chief, but it was in the Friday email, if you find it. And I'll try to look for it while Mr. Hall answers your other questions.
I can pull it up here, or
Just, if, if you could just reset, I don't want to take no more time with that. If you could just resend it to me when we're on our break, I'll read that so that I could be ready for a vote at our, at our meeting.
I'll send it to you, I have it up here, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Hall, I'm coming to you and then I'll go to Councilmember Lundie, I see her hand is raised.
Sure, okay, yes, ma'am, Councilmember, I'm Councilmember Rowell, thanks, it's a good question. The way we roll out this road improvement plan is we try to do sections at a time. And right now we're working on the left side of Tilden Road, which to try to complete both with the streets that didn't get paved, which is the one that you have proposals for right now. And also the next street will be Decatur Street. After the Decatur Street, which is the cul-de-sac right there, then we will come down and finish the rest of the portion of 55th. So this will be rolled out next, next month in our report of the road improvement plan. We had to, we had to take some out because WSSC did a whole lot of work. So the next work session, I will have that road improvement plan for you all, mayor, council and staff. And actually that section of 55th Avenue is in the road improvement plan as well.
That's helpful, thank you, Mr. Hall. And I'm really looking forward to that, because as I said, I know there's been a couple of residents reaching out about concerns about the conditions for certain roads. So it'll be good to see the comprehensive plan, so we're not just looking, you know, at one small segment, but we're looking at the, the big picture and making decisions. So next, we have you up for resurfacing, oh, no, sorry, you handled that, 58th Avenue construction update?
Mayor James, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lundie, thank you, you were up next.
No problem, thank you, Mr. Hall, for, for that information. So I don't, I don't recall, do we have a warranty with these companies or with the company that you're recommending?
Yes, ma'am, it should have been in your package. Each company, when they're doing any roadway, I mean, any road work, it's guaranteed you a one-year workmanship.
Okay, and that road
Warranty on all
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, it includes a one-year warranty on all material and workmanship.
Okay, thank you.
And that was prepared by all three of them.
Okay, thank you. I can't remember that street coming, just before you get to town hall, is it Emerson Road or Emerson, Emerson Street?
Edmiston Road. Edmiston Road.
Yeah, is that what, did we talk about that already about that dent that's there and it's been patched over, we talked about that? You know what I'm talking about?
Mr. Hall, she's referring to, so there was a bad pothole almost. Actually, I see code enforcement officer Reinhardt, go for it.
I was going to sink in, but it's patched over now, I just want to know what the plans were.
Yes, ma'am, that was a water main break that happened probably about a month and a half ago. We've been reaching out to WSSC to come repair that because it's going to be their responsibility to repair. And I can definitely reach out to them first thing in the morning to find out an update for that. And I can definitely reach out to them first thing in the morning to find out an update for that. But it should have been repaired by now. I don't know why it hasn't been, but it's definitely going to be responsibility of WSSC.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you both.
And Code Enforcement Officer Reinhardt, it was patched. It's just not completely smooth. So we can tell they did something, but it's just not, you know, everything that's needed.
With patches like that, as much wear and tear as it gets, it sinks down constantly, similar to what kind of happened up on Annapolis Road and Mrs., I spoke with Councilwoman Routh about. What's the wear and tear is you just have to remind them to come out until a permanent fix can be done.
Okay, we appreciate it. And Mr. Hall, we're sticking with you. We're moving into the updates for, from Maryland State Highway Administration on Forty-Eighth and Quincy Streets.
Oh, okay, okay. Once again, good afternoon, Mayor Council. As everybody knows, it's been an ongoing issue with the inlet, the damaged inlet, and also the corroded underground water main. We've briefly been reaching out back and forth emailing State Highway Administration and they have came to a conclusion of which they were saying that they will be out here this spring to do the job on Forty-Eighth Street to Quincy Place. Now, that's not, that's not including Quincy, the pedestrian, the pedestrian safety pattern that they had going on. As that, as that is in a design phase as of the moment, but we are making sure that they will get out here this spring to unclog the drains, put new pipets and also new inlet in there that's no, that's a little bit bigger than six inches. They have inlet in there right now that only has a six, six inch gap in between the curb, top of the curb and also the roadway. So what that, what that is doing right now is restricting any water from going down through there also with the deteriorated pipes underneath. So I look forward to having, having something by the, by the May council meeting to have a schedule of a starting date, as they say.
Great, thank you for that. And I'm not going to steal her thunder, but Councilmember Routh had a great idea that kind of segues, touches that area, so I'm not getting into it. But at the appropriate time, she will definitely share that, Mr. Hall. So hopefully you'll be on for, if it's not on this meeting, when we get into the council meeting. And then the final update is the mowing agreement with S H A. So back to you, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, okay. Yes, ma'am, Mayor Council. What we're doing is we're collaborating with State Highway for reimbursement of the grass cutting around the corridor of the Town of Blattonburg and also around the Peace Cross and also on Annapolis Road by Exxon on Annapolis Road. What we've been doing, we have been cutting this grass for years and years and now they want to come out and reimburse us for cutting the grass. But the way that they want to reimburse us is they want to put us on their schedule, which I have no problem with it. They want to come out and see prior to us cutting and after we complete the cut. And I have the representative of the State Highway Inspector. We met on site, we went over a few things and he also has came to the conclusion that I told him that four fifty in the Peace Cross sometimes doesn't get cut at the same time. So he's negotiating, he's willing to just come out afterwards. It don't matter. He said if it's two days after, he just want to make sure to see that it's completed and it's cut. And then that will be a little bit more easy for us to give them an invoice because we have the inspector saying what we did and took pictures of what we did also.
Great. Any questions from the council, Councilmember Routh?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor James. And, and looking at this memorandum of understanding, the rate to me seems a little low. I did a search as it relates to just other contracts that they had with patches of work in similar areas. Did we negotiate that rate anymore? When we were speaking?
Well, yes. Mr. Hall, you want to take it?
Well, by the, by the word of their mouth, when I spoke to him, he had laid online to say that we think, he think that it's best, I mean, best to keep it where it is because what we're getting paid, I'm not for sure the numbers and I didn't want to say them. It was a hu, it was, it was something a hundred and twenty something per acre or point something acre that we was getting as a Town of Blattonburg and his contractors that they was giving was around like seventy dollars or something like that per acre or point eight acres. Now, I don't have that in writing, but that's what he said.
And to piggyback off of that, so Mr. Hall reached out to his person and then I also reached out to my contact at State Highway and got the same information. So I think it was maybe last Tuesday or Wednesday, we compared notes and we got the same story. So the contact person, Mrs. Mason, said, look, we could save money and pay a contractor. We're just trying to partner with you all because you're right there. You see when the work needs to be done and you can respond much quicker than if we just employ a different contractor for the area. But Councilmember Routh, I do remember you raising that question when we talked about this last fall and that's why it was on the radar to bring it back around before signing off on the agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Hall. I don't see any other hands, so we're going to keep running along. Thank you very much for all those updates. We're going to switch and start talking about mosquitoes with Code Enforcement Officer Reinhardt.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I just wanted to, last year, we attempted to participate in the mosquito spraying program. Unfortunately, with COVID- nineteen, they suspended the program for one year. We did participate in twenty nineteen. And we plan on participating again this year. They're going to bring the program back. And just a little background on it, the Department of, Maryland Department of Agriculture actually comes to the community on a designated day of the week, which I don't have yet. As soon as I get it, I will put that out in one of our e-blasts. But they'll come through and they'll spray our community, the entire community of the Town of Blainsburg. And then they also have a second spraying program and that's if they, in one of their traps that they have in several locations throughout town, if they come across a infected mosquito with either West Nile or the Zika virus, they'll come out and do a emergency spray. That, that program is a great program. It, it works wonders. I, I know the year we did it, we will still get some complaints and concerns, but they weren't as bad as we received them in the past. Also, if a resident in our community does not want to participate in that program, they can reach out to the Maryland Department of Agriculture, go online and fill out a mosquito exemption form. And basically what that mosquito exemption form is, is within a hundred feet of their property, the truck as it's going through the neighborhood will stop spraying in front of that location for a hundred feet before to a hundred feet after, and then they will cut back on their spray system. One of the biggest things with mosquito in the Town of Blainsburg is we need actually all our residents to help out also. So if you have any stagnant water, buckets, tires or anything that's just laying around with stagnant water on your property, that's going to be one of our biggest breeding concerns we have here in the Town of Blainsburg. Any questions from the Mayor Council?
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Looking for raised hands, Councilmember, Councilmember Routh?
Hi, I'm Mayor James. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Officer Reinhardt, for that presentation. I am in support of the mosquito praying, the spraying program. A few years back, a Wardland resident was diagnosed with the West Nile virus. And so this is very important to some of the residents. And I have received some correspondence speaking to supporting the mosquito praying, spraying program. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. And I know if it's the one gentleman exactly who you're speaking of. But thank you again, Mr. Reinhardt. Just want to confirm, it's still four K per year for the cost to be a part of the program?
Actually, I believe it's been reduced some. The last invoice, I, I shouldn't say invoice, when we received the paperwork for it, it was approximately fourteen hundred dollars for the whole season.
Okay.
And again, the season usually runs from like late April to like September. But again, once, once I have some more definite information from the Maryland Department of Agriculture and the program manager, I'll make sure that that gets forwarded out into our, one of our community e-blasts.
Perfect. Thank you again. And so with that, we are going to move over to our special guest, Mr. Tony Ruffin, who is joining us from the great company Pepco. Look at that smile. So, Mr. Ruffin, thank you for joining. I believe one of your colleagues may be joining as well, your engineer. But I'll turn it over to you to walk us through your information.
Great. Thank you, Mayor James. It is good to see everyone tonight. I am Tony Ruffin, Governmental External Affairs Manager for Pepco Maryland. I do believe my colleague may have joined by phone, Ms. Barbara Gonzalez, who is our Construction Manager for our Pepco Electric Vehicle Public Charging Station. Barbara, if you can hear us, please identify yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm here. This is Barbara.
All right, great. Thanks. Now, we're a tiny bit handicapped because I don't believe that Barbara can see the screen, but she can hear us. And so if I can start first by thanking Mayor and Council for allowing us to come for tonight, just to talk about a couple of items. As a little bit of background, I had the pleasure of, of being with Barbara and, and other members of the Pepco team at the recent City of Mount Rainier ribbon cutting ceremony relative to our EV work there, public charging work there. A great event. I know council members were there and we did engage. And I, I think you could be our, our best advocates in that you saw what was going on, the great work that was done in the City of Mount Rainier and the public charging stations that we put there. So I don't really anticipate that this will be a very, very hard sell for the Town of Blattonburg because my understanding from the immediate feedback was that you guys are, are, are ready to join and certainly want the Town of Blattonburg to be a part of the process. So what I'd like to do tonight is see if I can share my screen. I did send the mayor, and I don't know if it's been shared with the council, the site proposal of a location that we have identified. Barbara, who, as I said, is our construction manager, went out and assessed a particular location. And we put a site proposal together for your review. I understand that you may also have some additional feedback or even an additional location area that you might be interested in. And so let's talk about, we can certainly talk about that. If you allow me to share my screen.
You have it.
All right. All right, please let me know if you can see my screen.
Not yet. Give us one moment, Mr. Ruffin. Okay, now we can see it.
Okay, great. And so again, and Barbara, just for your knowledge, I'll walk, kind of walk through this a little bit and maybe you can give some commentary. We sent a site proposal to the mayor for the location of forty-two twenty-nine Edmiston Road, which, which we identified sort of meets the engineering aspects of this project. And you'll be able to see in the photograph on the, at least on the first page, what we've identified. So the, the, the location is marked, the forty-two twenty-nine Edmiston Road, that's marked and it's near the Blattonburg Police Station. You can see when we scroll down a little further and, and maybe Barbara can elaborate on this where we have the photo of the exact site location where we have marked in blue, in green and in orange, or red, I should say, where we would put the charging stations. And Barbara, I know you're at a bit of a handicap not being able to see the photos itself, but the red is the parking spaces you identified. The green is where the charging stations would go and the blue would be the meter cabinet. Is there anything, any comment you'd like to make, Barbara?
Yes, well, I was hoping for my tongue. Good evening, everyone, and thank you. The location that I selected, as you probably can see, is in front of the town hall offices, is the last parking space in the front, which is near that little grassy area and close to the pole. As you can see, the electric pole is over there. And where the grassy area is located is where I plan to put a DC fast charger and I plan to, obviously with your approval, and I plan to put my equipment. I cannot put anything, any charging station. As you can see, the area in the parking lot is environmental friendly, meaning that this is an area that was created to filtrate the water and there's a good size of parking lot. That's environmental friendly and we do not want to do any kind of damage to any of the great work that you guys have done there. So in the grassy area was where I will be recommending to put a, a DC fast charger, which is maybe like ten feet away from the pole. Why DC fast charger, you may ask? You're very close to a very main route, which is traveled by, by many vehicles. The other thing is that the DC fast charger, people that will use that, not all the vehicles can use it, but the vehicles that use a DC fast charger, they will come and charge their vehicle. Eighty percent of the vehicle will be charged within half an hour. So somebody's going to pull in, flag in, maybe check their emails and they will be going on to, or doing other things. In your neighborhood, I had also looked at the police station, but the police station is not an area that is public, open to the public. In fact, there is a lot of cameras for obvious reasons and there is signs that, you know, do not trespass, do not enter. And further down, I had also looked at the fire department, which do not have parking spaces in front for anything. So in the other side, your parking lot, if my memory is correct, again, I'm, I'm speaking from memory, I've been there more than one time. You have something like a windmill type of thing and there's a lot of obstruction, there's lighting and I don't want to disturb any of the great work that you have done in that area.
All right, thank you, Barbara. If, if with Mayor and Council's permission, I can stop sharing my screen and, and stop here and just, we can take any questions that you may have relative to what we presented. And then also, I understand you have some additional commentary about another potential location.
Right. So thank you, Mr. Ruffin. And what I did with that proposal, I sent it over to Public Works and the team just to understand if, from their standpoint, that would work with the existing infrastructure. And they came back and alternatively proposed the side of the parking lot that backs up to the town park. There's a grassy area behind that and so it wouldn't be, if you can imagine, right by the front entrance to the town hall. So if residents are trying to pull in because they need to meet with staff or get information, you wouldn't have that space right at the beginning taken with the charger. And so if you look in this image, and Chief Collington, do you want to take it from here? I think you have recommended this side when we last spoke.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon, Mayor Council, colleagues and community. So what we did, appreciate the other site over there, but there were a couple of concerns that I had about that. One, it takes up a lot of the little grassy area that we have there for the station beautification around town hall. Two, those are probably the most used parking spaces for town hall business. So what we proposed is where the pot is sitting, as you can see in the photographs that we submitted this evening, you see two parking spaces clearly marked there where the pot is. That pot is, will be soon taken away. And we figured that even though you said most of those cars will be charged within an hour, And we figured that even though you said most of those cars will be charged within an hour, I'm familiar with the electric charging stations. Sometime it takes up to four hours to have these vehicles fully charged. So if we can have this area here, there's a, I'm sure there's some electrical because there's a building about to the right of the, the pot is one of our buildings there. There's power source there, but there's also on the other side of the driveway is another electric pole that you probably can draw your power stores from.
But I, Chief, I'm sorry to interrupt you just because Barbara cannot.
Tony, Tony.
Yes, go ahead, Barbara.
Let me, let me answer that. Thank you, Chief, for that information. I haven't seen your new site, so I would have to look at it and evaluate that. Now, if we change the, the location, that doesn't mean I'm going to put a DC fast charger in the new location. I have to evaluate that new location. And just because you see a pole, it may be a Pepco pole, it may be a different type of power source for the DC fast charger that I was planning for that location. That was the ideal location for the DC fast charger. Changing location, I will have to evaluate what will be required or what will be the best level of charging. Now, you are absolutely correct. If we install level two in that new location, it may take anywhere between two and, or zero hours all the way to four or five hours. And if you have a Tesla, it's certainly going to take you longer to charge. So without seeing that location, I'm not going to speculate. I'd rather take a look at it, go to the site, inspect it myself, and, and we'll be able to get back to you guys. One thing that is important for Mayor and Council and the community is that we are not going to take power from your building. We are not going to take power from any of your facilities. This charging station, Pepco is going to pay the electricity bill. Pepco is going to own, maintain, and operate. So we are not sending the electricity bill back to you. This is all going to be free of charge to you. And when we, whoever uses this loca, this, this charging station will pay us, okay? Then we pay the electricity from that revenue. So you will never get an electric bill, you will never get an engineering bill, you will never get none of the stuff that associated with a construction of this type. So I do hope that that helps. But I will, I'll, I'll take a look at that new location. If you can email it to Tony, I'm sure he's going to email it to me before the night is over. And, and we'll, we'll take a look at it and get back, get back to you.
Great. Thanks, Barbara. The only thing I was going to ask for is the actual address, location, where this, where this is. Could you just give it to me?
Sure. It's the same parking lot. So it's forty-two, twenty-nine Edmiston Road. So for the Town Hall address, it's just the other end of that parking lot.
Okay. So we, so, and would it be possible to have these pictures emailed to me so I can share them?
Sure. I'll send them right over.
Okay, great.
Yep. Thank you. Absolutely. And then I know we're running short on time, Mr. Ruffin. So if we can't get to the streetlight initiative, would love to have you come back and talk more about that. But if you could at least just talk about the multi-year plan overview because I believe there's some immediate action that you are asking of us on that front.
Great. Thank you again, Mayor, for, for that. And I can make it very, very quick and certainly would be willing to come, come back appropriately. Just as background, Pepco filed a multi-year plan with the Maryland Public Service Commission back in October. A part of this multi-year plan includes our LED streetlight initiative, which is a, an initiative that Pepco is getting ready to undertake if we are approved by the commission to upgrade more than some sixty-six thousand Pepco-owned lights within our Pepco Prince George's and Montgomery County service territories. Also a part of that, of what we call our NYPD, is the Electric Vehicle Public Charging Program, which we've just discussed. The, as part of the commission process, they hold two public hearings in which they take public comment on what we have filed before them. And, and so I had engaged the mayor and wanted to ask for, for the town of Bladensburg to offer any, any level of support relative to some of the caveats of the NYPD. I know that Bladensburg has been most interested in the Electric Vehicle Public Charging Program. So I thought this would be a great meeting to get some synergy on both, both of, of those initiatives. I know that streetlights is very important to pretty much every municipality that I've engaged with in, in Montgomery County and Prince George's County. So we wanted to have, wanted Mayor and Council to have the opportunity to, to weigh in, make either an oral statement or provide a letter of support. As Mayor indicated there, a timing isn't issue. The first public hearing was on March the fifteenth, and the last public hearing is April fifteenth. And so it would be helpful to know if Mayor and Council would be interested in oral, in, in providing an oral support for our NYPD. If so, then you would have to register by the twelfth. I'm sorry, by the tomorrow, the thirteenth, to be able to participate. If not, you can also offer a letter of support and there's a little more time to be, to do that. But I wanted to bring both options before Mayor and Council tonight since we are talking about our EV program.
Great. And I want to go to Councilmember Rout. And again, just because of the timing, I did want to ask Mr. Ruffin to be here to explain the program to everyone and give the opportunity to weigh in and provide public comments, not just the council, but the residents. You have an opportunity to weigh in before the Public Service Commission as well. But over to you, Councilmember Rout.
Thank you, Mayor James. My first question is regarding the EV stations. I think that Bladensburg has comparable amount of residents to the town of Mount Rainier. And so as it relates to equity, right, Tony? I wanted to speak to see if I could advocate on behalf of more stations in the town of Bladensburg. And here's the reason why, right? Four fifty Annapolis Road, there are thousands of people that travel Annapolis Road from Annapolis. And we have the opportunity, we, we manage that, we manage that traffic. We manage, you know, responses to businesses. That's huge. And that's on the other side of Bladensburg. So if we're looking to be more conscious about green and environment, I would advocate for more, at least two in Ward Two, you know, and then at least three in Ward One, as it relates to, yes, that's a perfect location. But Mount Rainier, they have like, what, five, six, seven? Come on, Tony, you can't just offer us one. We need a little bit more.
You know, if, if Barbara, if Barbara were visible, I'm sure she'd be smiling. Councilmember Rout, definitely, we would love to put as many public charging stations in the town of Bladensburg as we could find locations to put them in, as long as they meet the engineering.
Tony, can you hear me?
Yes, Barbara, go ahead.
Well, thank you. I'm smiling. But Mount Rainier only have three, okay? This is predicated on the site that you give me and the locations that you give me. You are absolutely correct. I'm looking also at Bladensburg Library. In fact, I was there last week. I'm looking at other places in Bladensburg. But again, the, the issue here is who never had the jurisdiction for those locations. The library is part of Prince George County libraries. So I had to go to Prince George County for approval with Tony, obviously. But you give me the locations, engage me, give me the sites, and certainly we will evaluate everything. And the more, the better. So I'm not opposed to that. That's a great idea. But I just want to make sure that you know that Mount Rainier doesn't have seven. This is have three. And I can tell you other locations in Annapolis Road, that, that's a beautiful place. And that's why, also since you guys are so close to major highways in orderies, that's one of the reason for me proposing a DC fast charger right there in front of Town Hall. But that's not going to work, so we need to pivot and look for more locations. Thank you very much. I feel very welcome and I love this. But I need the locations. Without the locations, you know, I just cannot put it anywhere. Somebody, whoever is in charge of that area can give us this location and we certainly like to take a look at it.
Great. Thank, thank you so much for that, Barbara. So I know Councilmember Rout mentioned Ward One. And there's definitely places that pop out in Ward Two. And I'm thinking of our public access roads, so not on private property where we'd have any issues. But Fifty-seventh Avenue is a no-brainer. So we'll get together, get our list, send it over to Mr. Ruffin so he can get with Barbara and whoever else to plan a site visit, to come out and take a look and see if the infrastructure can work. And then with the letter of support, just wanted to actually, not sure if we have that on the next meeting agenda, but really just, is there a consensus to accommodate that request to provide a letter from the council supporting their multi-year plan? I'm looking at, I see Councilmember Rout affirmative. Councilmember Blunt? Okay, thumbs up, Councilmember Lundie. Okay. So he's provided some sample text, so I can take that, put it into a draft and send that out if you all can give me till tomorrow. And also just want to highlight though, for residents, we encourage you to also comment, take advantage of that opportunity to do so. So with that, Mr. Ruffin and Barbara, we thank you both for joining us tonight. And we'll let you go. And again, try to have you come back for more information on the street lighting program.
Great. Thank you so much for inviting us tonight. We had a little bit of a technical walk, but we worked through it. And we look forward to seeing you again, and we look forward to the follow-up on the program. All right.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Have a good evening.
All right, you too.
Thank you. And so next, I'll turn it over to, I have Councilmember Rout next while I make my follow-up notes about all the Pepco things. And this is with respect to Spring Prayer Week.
Madam, I did have a question. I didn't want to interrupt, but I had a question. So will you, I think we had consensus on the call, so will you be submitting a request for, to, to testify? Because in my notes from Mr. Ruffin, he said by tomorrow, the twelfth, we would need for oral support. So you're going to take that on, right? I just wanted to confirm.
Oh, I was going to do the letter of support. Did someone, I can testify, but does someone else on the council want to testify?
I, I can. I can testify, but I just wanted to make sure that it gets in there. Yeah, so he said it, he said both. So I just wanted to cover our basis. Somebody should oral testify.
So if you could handle that, I believe you have to register by tomorrow and then that way I can work on the letter and we cover both bases. But thank you for that.
Okay. Okay.
And I'm turning it over to you for Spring Prayer Week.
Yes. Hi, council residents, staff. Councilmember Lundie and myself, we're just brainstorming about ways that we could respond to some of the public comments that were shared as it relates to just everything that's going on in the world. And so prayer is something that we could give hope to and for, for each other. And we were thinking that as we're climbing out of COVID, because we are climbing out of COVID, we wanted to give an opportunity for people to celebrate spring. We're out of the winter, out of the darkness. We are going to transform, move forward. And so we thought that a prayer week was timely. And it'll be with the faith-based organizations, Councilmember Lundie and myself. We have polled the, the organizations that we received for Officer Reinhardt. Thank you, Officer Reinhardt, for sharing that list with Councilwoman Lundie as it relates to the, the faith-based organizations that we have. So we reached out to all of them and we did get responses back. And they want to have a spirit of reflection or prayer. And it's a week. So on each different day, there will be many different topics on each of the day, and it's like renewed energy. So that, that day, that will be the prayer. And so we just, we want to, you know, we just want to start spring is right. So I just really request that the members of the town council would allow this to happen. And thank you, Mayor James.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Rout. Any comments or question from the council or staff? Councilmember Blunt?
I remember in the past, Councilmember Ficklin, he did, used to do with the PAC. He did his program here every year, and it was well-attended. So I think that's, that will be, I mean, well-attended. The residents will love it. I think it's good. That's, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Blunt. Councilmember Lundie?
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, and also we're going to have also live, live or pre-recorded music. We were thinking about doing something like that as well. So not only is there going to be, you know, praying over a particular topic or giving some comments about a topic, but we're also going to have music and instrumental music as where, as well as singing as well. So it's going to be very festive and, you know, very inclusive.
Great. Thank you for that and for the observance of National Spring Prayer Week. And so with that, Councilmember Lundie, I'm going to come over to you for your updates on Earth Day and Growing Green with Pride.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we, Mayor James and myself collaborated on just having a discussion about the things we could do this year as related to our Earth Day activities and our Going Green with Pride that the county does. And so we kicked it off on this past Saturday, April tenth, with a Bladensburg Community Cleanup that I think went very well. We had vast participation from the young and the young at heart. We had a lot of students, we had residents. We also had the members of the Young Democrats to come out. We had our members, a member of our Going Green Team that came out. And so that was very wonderful. We also had our Councilmember Mendoza and Rout to come out. And we had different locations. Also, Councilmember, Councilwoman Jolene Ivy as well came out. And she couldn't wait to get started, okay? Even before we were going to start at nine a.m., she said, I'm ready, let's go. So that was just fabulous. Everything was really good. So we tried to do some activities for some particular days. So the Going Green Cleanup Event on the tenth went very well. We also talked about doing some tips, and I believe the first tip went out today, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. McDowell put that tip out, her and Mayor James are working together on that. And anyone who has a tip, you can submit it to myself or Mayor James. And we can go, you know, get that to Ms. Diamond. Is that okay? Yeah, so we're going to do tips for the week. We also are doing something, working with our Public Works Department to spruce up our Town Hall, our park, our Harrington Park. Many of our residents come there. I walked the trail myself. I know, it's a, it's a small trail, but nonetheless, it's a trail. And I come out there and I walk, and I love to see everybody out there having their picnics and eating and playing on the playground. So Mr. Purnell and his staff have already started to spruce up the area around Town Hall. You would notice the flowers down. They're going to be doing a power wash of the equipment, sprucing up the benches and all that good stuff. So it's just some great things that are going on with that. We're also planning to have a Earth Day virtual event, celebrating our planet together or some other name, if you all might, you know, the members of the council and staff may want to make a recommendation. And so during that, we're looking at the date of the twenty-fourth. The sprucing up, we want to have that to, to end on like around the twenty-first. But the virtual Earth Day event, we're looking at the twenty-fourth. So we're thinking about having a main room where we have some opening remarks. And then we have like three breakout rooms. And those three breakout rooms, we're looking at having maybe a storytime with sustainable kid-friendly story, maybe a smoothie and a cooking demo, where you do like a meatless meal with your family or something. So if any of the council members would love to do that, hint, hint, Councilmember Rout may want to do something with her voice. Or any of our members of our council and staff or, and I could Or any of our uh members of our council and staff or uh our community can get involved as well. Um we also looking at want to, I think Mayor James is going to reach out to our um echo farms to see if they could do something um be in one of our breakout rooms. Um what else? Uh, duh, 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 duh. So, and we just need a time for that. So we haven't come over a time yet, so for the twenty-fourth. And is that a Saturday? I don't have my calendar. What date? Is that, what date is that?
It's a Saturday.
Okay, it is a Saturday. So any recommendations for time before I go on for that? To do the virtual event, maybe like a what, two-ish, three? Three o'clock? Sounds good. Everybody chatting at one time. Okay, so let's just potentially head down for three o'clock because we have to work with um um Rick, um you know, to make sure that he can use his Zoom account. And he said he's on board with that, he's on the line, so he's good with that. Um also, we've talked about for our May first, which is the county exec, the Going Green with Pride event is on May first. So we're hoping that people who came with us and volunteered on the tenth will come back with us on May first. We're thinking about, the mayor and I discussed about getting some T-shirts. She had a great idea about getting the T-shirts. And I thought that was a great idea, Mayor James, to have T-shirts um for our volunteers. Um and also, we've been talking about for years, some, put some trash receptacles around town, around town, some more trash receptacles. And those have been talked about even before I started working with this um Earth Day event, before I became on um as a council member. And so I think that's something we really need to do in this, this year um to encourage people to put trash not on the ground, but in the trash cans. So we need some trash receptacle, can I get an amen on that? All right, so that's all I have with that right now. So just if anybody's interested and wanted to read a story to the kids about something about sustainability, um let me know or Mayor James know, so we can get this going, so we can set you up and get you, you know, hooked up with this Zoom event that we're going to have on the twenty-fourth at three P M.
Great, thank you. Yes, thank you, council member Lundie, for all the great um ideas and updates. So we are at six forty-seven and we still have a little bit further to go. Um and the budget is clearly important, so I'm wondering if you all want to just move that to the council meeting because Mr. Tenelli has to get through our schedules with the budget calendar, you know, giving us that overview. Um and then that way we'll have time to get through the um American Rescue Plan, which is critical, but also uh council member routes update about Mental Health Awareness Month. And then also wanted to um share something with you all that was sent to us from the city of Greenville on Maglev. So council member route, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, council member blunt first with the um senior.
Did I miss her? Oh, oh my gosh, I'm, I scrolled down too far.
So many things.
These screens. Council member blunt.
Good evening, the council staff and um residents and constituents. I'm coming to you about our senior gathering, I've been trying to have for the last ten years. But hopefully this year I can um have the senior gathering um for the community in September. I know it's early, but that's a lot of planning. And hopefully the chief, Walter James, the mayor's husband, can help me uh put this whole program together as we discussed in the past of bringing the seniors together in one space. I'm with a lot of information, food and fun. So hopefully that the CDC allows us to meet in the David Harrington Park to plan this activity in September. So hopefully if there's any um residents out in about who would like to be a part of um this event, um and assisting or volunteer, you can please um call Diane and um give her your name, information so that um you can participate. But this is um a senior event. Just bringing the seniors together so they can meet, meet up again and um just release some of that stress, that mental stress. So again, um it's all about the senior picnic and I'm going to give you a great, great event. So that's all. And don't forget, don't forget to let your husband know, we need that fish.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you, council member blunt, for making sure we didn't forget about that because we were looking forward to it last year and then the pandemic hit. So I'm looking forward to it this year. Um and over to you, council member route.
Thank you, Mayor James. Um in response to the public comments that we received um about prayer um over the la- we also received public comments about mental health and what are we doing about mental health? And so I wanted to propose that Mental Health Awareness Month is in May. Um and that is um uh that is enacted by SAMSA, which is a federal health and human services agency. They have um tool kits on their websites um to host a mental health awareness in person or virtual. Um I would like to request that we invest in that, um that we have a committee um that's made up of town, at least two town residents um and a staff um for the purposes of putting together a mental health awareness day. And I know it's May, um but we can get it done, something outdoors in the Harrington Park. Um that goal would be to get services on-site. So having, you know, a couple of private vendors, public vendors that accept Medicaid, Medicare, invite the Department of Social Services out, they can enroll people on the spot. I mean, I'm talking some real action-oriented things to meet the needs of all of our residents. And so we are, your council is working residents on behalf of you, on behalf of businesses. When you submit public comment, we hear you. And so this was um with that prayer submitted and public comment, so was mental health. And so I would like to request a budgeted, something, a budget, it has to come from somewhere. Um but it's, you know, to, for resources, so you know, let's talk about, you know, that in a, in the work session, I mean, in the council meeting. Um because, you know, we, we don't have this budgeted, so can we take it out of the town's um mayor and council budget? Like a couple thousand dollars or something like that for, like, that's just what I'm coming to you for because um we can do this, we can provide some services for our residents for one day out of the month in May. Your back, Mayor James.
Thank you, council member route. And we do have a budget for things like this under the council events in the mayor and council budget. So I definitely agree, let's put some resources behind this so that we don't just do it half-heartedly, but we put on a really high-quality professional event. Because if we're truly trying to help people, um we want them to feel comfortable coming out and not just look like I rolled up my little red wagon and threw this together. So definitely see heads shaking as well. And I like your idea of getting residents to be part of the organization, put in the program together, and they may have resources. So with that, I would say, um just like council member Lundie talked about, if you're interested, please reach out to Ms. Diane Griffin, call three oh one nine two seven seven zero four eight and leave your contact information if you want to be a part of our green initiatives or the Mental Health Awareness Month initiative. And um Mr. Tenelli, we don't want to cut you short, so we're going to move the F Y twenty-two budget to the next meeting for the sake of time and jump right over into um the American Rescue Plan funding. Um council member route, i- if you don't mind, I'm just going to skip, I can give a quick legislative overview in like ten seconds and do more in the next meeting. But as you all may be aware, Congress passed the latest stimulus plan. And in that, seven point eight roughly million dollars will be allocated to the town of Bladensburg for COVID relief so that we can directly provide that relief to our constituents, residents, businesses, um schools, whatever is needed directly. So um coming from that, council member route has some great ideas that I want to turn over to her to share with everyone.
Thank you, Mayor James. Um last week I spoke, I met with Mayor James and our acting town administrator, Chief Collinson um with a couple of ideas. Um as um the public may not know, but we belong as the town. Town council belongs to the National League of Cities, which is a, a organization that represents a lot of municipalities. So we get information from trainings. And that's one particular training uh that I received was in response to the American Rescue Plan. And there's money coming down the road for center, state centers, um and for um members of Congress, specifically for um water ish, water mitigation, um um infrastructure. There is lots of funding that's coming, and so the time is now to really start asking and collaborating and um working with our federal partners to make sure that we have a seat at the table and we're at the beginning with our servant dish ready and with our hands out. Um and so we wanted to um have a couple of site visits, inviting the states to come down. Um Chief Collinson, who's our acting town administrator, will lead that with our staff to be able to be on the boots on the ground. So when Public Works is there, the chief is there, code enforcement is there, a member from the town council is there. And we will, uh you know, advocate on our residents' behalf because there's lots of funding coming. Um in addition to that, being able to look at different traffic studies because the money is going to flow and come in. Lastly, um there were, in that same training, there was a suggestion that we should begin working around developing what our needs are. Um and so given um really the basis of my role, my, my public servant role in the District of Columbia, I do needs assessments and it's pretty easy, right? And so I was thinking that the mayor and council, the town council um could conduct some uh some needs assessments um using our resources that we already have. You know, look me up on LinkedIn, it's really what I do for a living. And we could, we could train each other on what the needs assessment looks like. And we can lead these sessions, we can do this. And we can have one for businesses, one for town residents and one for staff. And there can be, there's four different things um that these grants are going to speak to. Infrastructure, flooding or maintenance issues, responses to residents' needs during COVID, staffing overtime, it can't, it um starts thirteen dol- thirteen dollars an hour. Um and it's, it cannot exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And then there's one more, I'm sorry, my memory is jogging, but I got three out of four. Um and so with that, we can have those four categories and go to each of these town, these um sessions, and we can ask our residents. So we, when it's time where we understand what these um, these, what we can and cannot spend, we have a plan. I think that Bladensburg, we, we are great, but we often need some plans. And so let's get behind, let's get in front of this, uh we know it's coming. And so those were just my ideas.
That was perfect. Thank you, council member route. And so um it sound, again, I shouldn't say it sounded, it looks like there was agreement. I was looking as you were talking, trying to see heads nodding from council member blunt and council member Lundie. So it looks like we're all on the same page. And so if we, if you have time and want to talk through, okay, how do we put this together? Um let's go ahead and set that up and make it happen. But again, thank you for bringing that information back to us so we can be prepared and have a solid plan um once the decisions are made from U S Treasury guidelines. And then very briefly, um I think I had mentioned to you all previously that one of the council members from Greenville have reached out because of the Maglev um train and that project being at the D E I S phase. And their concern was legally to have an expert review, this document was going to be cost prohibitive if they go down that road themselves. And so they sent us a letter. Unfortunately, I can't scan an email, so I'm not sure if the staff was able to scan it for me and send it to you all. If not, I'll try to get this to you tomorrow. But in essence, the letter from Greenville is um asking Bladensburg to be a part of um paying for this D E I S legal review. I um do understand they've reached out to the town of Chevrolet and other port towns as well. Right now, they're thinking it'll be in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars when it's all said and done from soup to nuts on the entire process. So I can understand why they can't afford to put that kind of money out. But if you divide it up between ten or fifteen municipalities, it becomes much more manageable and it's critical for all of us to make sure we have legal review. I've tried reading in that document, but it is extensive. And the amount of expertise on the environment needed, I, I couldn't do it justice. I, I, there are some things I know, but like council member route said, you have your expertise, you know, and so forth, but you can't necessarily maybe go in and do a legal review on something that's extensive. So wanted to bring this uh before the council so that um we could say if we're interested in collaborating with them, we're not giving them a blank check. We're just saying we agree to have a further conversation with our council, with their council and the other towns that are interested in participating. So we can just map out what exactly is this going to look like and make some decisions from there. Because at this point, we can't say, yes, here's a, a blank check. I just want to know if you all would be open to me going back to them and saying our council is interested in having further discussion on this matter. Uh so just, I see council member route's head was nodding, council member Lundie, would that be all right with you? Okay, council member blunt, would that be all right? Okay, all right, uh thank you. So I'll circle back to Mayor Byrd, just to let him know there is interest in um having further discussion on this. Um at this time, we've come to the end of the agenda, so to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's council work session.
I'm, I saw move.
Moved by council member route, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by council member blunt, all in favor, I'm sorry, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much. We're adjourned from the work session. And uh we'll just take a brief moment, I see a couple of um council members, well, one council member stepped away. So let's give folks a minute to hit the restroom and then we'll come back, Mr. Gray, to start the next meeting.